All right. Good morning, everybody. We are here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners Board Session. It's Wednesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It is nine oh two AM, and we're in the Senator hearing room at five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. If you would, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to start with public comment, and we have one individual signed up, Jack McFadden. If you'd come over here to this microphone, please.
I'm part of hearing, so I hope you called my name.
I did, yeah. If I talk a little louder, is that helpful?
That's the problem when you get old.
Well, if you have the recipe on how to prevent it, you let me know. So for the record, if you'd please introduce yourself, introduce yourself and tell us your address.
Correct. I reside at forty-one fifty-three Riverside Drive South, which is at the intersection of Skyline and Riverside. And I live about seven to eight thousand feet east, southeast, of the fire which occurred on Friday night. And I'm here to comment on some problems that I observed. A lot of them aren't something that the Commission can do much about, since most of it relied on the Fire Department and the Sheriff's Office. But my big criticism was a complete and total lack of information for the people that were being evacuated. We were not given any particular notice going from one to two to get out of Dodge time. At about five o'clock in the evening, I received a Facebook message texted to me from a close friend that said, "Are you aware of this?" And it was a picture, apparently, from Facebook that showed the smoke rising from the antenna farm up on top of the hill. Well, that concerned me because the winds were kicking up. I live about seven, maybe eight thousand feet east of the antenna farm as the crow flies or as the wind blows. The first thing I did was frankly get in my car, drive down Riverside, and go out onto the flatlands where the blueberry fields are, and look back up on the hill. And my first inclination was, we need to get out of Dodge. I have a disabled roommate, a veteran, who's not particularly ambulatory. But we got in, we drove to the Wildlife Refuge, which was somewhat south and west of my home. Looking back up the hill, the smoke had increased substantially. At that point, there was a sheriff's officer at the intersection down on, I don't recall if it's Sidney Road or Ankeny, but it's the Extension of Liberty. Who had no information whatsoever? And I said, "Well, who's in charge?" "Well, we don't know. No one knows." And he looked at his screen in his patrol car, there was no information on it whatsoever. Now, I realize that's in the bailiwick of the sheriff's office, and you guys only get control of him one time a year at budget time. And of course, this is an emergency, and we're in a suburban area. This isn't like being out in the woods where there's no homes around and you've got some time to evaluate what the situation is turning into. We were told that the command center was at Crossler Middle School, which I didn't have a clue where it was at or how to get there. So we looked it up on a map, we drove up Liberty and got there about, at this point, it's now about eight o'clock in the evening, the sun has set, it's now dark. There's a command post there from the city of Salem, satellite dish in the air, probably thirty or thirty-five sheriff's deputies from various communities, not all Marion County. We had a great response from adjacent counties, Polk, Lynn County, and so forth. The problem was, nobody knew what was going on, absolutely no one. Someone said, "Well, check on the Marion County website, emergency information." Well, you know, I kept checking your website for the next three days. I could not find a single entry concerning the Vita Springs fire. I found several entries from two thousand twenty. Boy, that's useful. Then we were directed to the site for help for the people that had been evacuated, that had been told to leave their homes, and that was Judson Middle School. It's now nine-thirty or ten o'clock at night, it's dark. I didn't know where Judson Middle School is. I don't have kids, so I've never had an opportunity to go there. The doors were locked. There was two deputy cars in that location. There were five TV crews from the Portland area. No way to get in the school, no Red Cross. I had two student roommates who also evacuated with me. They decided to stay there and wait for the Red Cross. I decided that because of the veteran that I have kind of take care of, we needed to find a place to stay for the night. Apparently, so did the other two thousand people that were evacuated. We ended up driving all the way to Corvallis before we could find a room for the night. The next day, we went back, talked to my roommates, the two young guys, and they said, "When the Red Cross guy finally showed up, he had one cot, one." To say that this evacuation was not handled well would be an understatement, but my biggest criticism is not with the sheriff's office, it's not with the county commission, it's just a total lack of information. There was no bulletin put out to the TV station saying, "Hey, there's a serious fire and we're going to pull a major evacuation of several thousand people," because the Level Three evacuation covered an area six miles away from the tower site. There's a lot of homes up there, and those homes, if you've ever been up there, are tucked away back in the woods. It's not like you can go door-to-door in a trailer court and saying, you know, "Here's what's happening." Sheriff's Department did not send information out to their deputies. So when I did return home, it was the first time I learned that the evacuation had went from three to two, be ready, at my location. But not from the sheriff's deputy, from KGW's website. Still nothing on Marion County, still nothing with the deputies blocking traffic at the end of Skyline where it intersects with Riverside. A complete lack of public information as to what to do, where to go, and what's happening. I have calmed down considerably from my dissatisfaction of wandering around that command center. I have a couple of questions, which probably should be directed more to the Sheriff's Department. Why were we sent to a school that's locked up when most of the people were closer to the Independence Bridge and being evacuated to that large park, which is right on the river, where there's a hotel, where there's a civic center that has public meeting rooms? And by the way, part of that whole evacuation area is in the Polk County Fire District, even though we are residents of Marion County. So there was a natural flow there, straight, no traffic, instead of wandering all the way around to get to Liberty Street to end up at a school that is locked up, that trying to fight it in the middle of the night when you're upset, you're worried about your home, was a completely awkward situation. So that's my story. I have now vented.
Thank you for being here. I don't, can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
No.
Okay, well, thank you for being here. We're sorry that the response wasn't better.
Well, again.
There is an after-action report that's going on.
Again, you know, it's no one's fault.
Well, I don't know that it is anybody's fault, but we do have a responsibility to be the best, and we are working towards being the best.
You do have an emergency information site clearly labeled on your website, right at the top, with a little red boundary around it, which, in this particular instance, was totally worthless.
That's good information to have, because that red box isn't usually there. It was stood up specifically for this emergency, and our Chief Administrative Officer will get into that with our communications team to make sure it's more robust. And there's, September is also Emergency Preparedness Month, and so, yeah, it's ironic. I'm just curious, Mr. McFadden, do you have a cellphone?
Yes.
So we use an emergency response system.
And I had signed up for that, and I never received an alert.
Okay, so can you, before you leave, would you mind giving us your cellphone number so that way we can reverse look into our system to see why it wasn't pinged? Because there's two reasons for that. One, since you're signed up, you should have automatically gotten a response. And two, regardless of whether you signed up based on that emergency evacuation, you should have received a notice. So something in the system isn't working properly, and we need to make sure that it is.
Well, I can speculate. The towers at the top of the hill where the fire was occurring is really our cell site for most of the people in that area. I suspect that the emergency responders, as well as other people, had completely plugged that site. And what happens is, people in our neighborhood, our cell service is transferred automatically over towards Albany or Independence, both of which are in Polk County, and we are switched to the nine-one-one site for Benton County. And I know we had a fire several years ago during the construction of a new home, and it took about ten minutes before the Benton County people understood, whoa, this isn't in Benton County, this is in Marion County.
Yeah.
And it's just one of those things, that's part of the technology system, the way it works.
Well, one of the, well, the positive thing that came out of this is that no lives were lost and no homes were damaged.
And for that, we are very thankful.
We are, but we will work to be better, I guarantee it.
Good.
Thank you for coming today, and if you would, give Brenda at the end here your phone number. Thank you. All right, have a good day. Okay. Are you going to be there right at noon or right? Yeah, before, was it before? Okay, all right. Okay, Commissioner Cameron is actually heading out to go to ribbon-cutting in Woodburn for the Aware Food Bank, which we're very grateful that we can divide and conquer today to do all the important things. So Commissioner Willis, it's all on you today.
Great. I will start off with a motion and make a motion to add an item to consent agenda. Approve an order delegating authority of the Chief Administrative Officer to transfer a parcel of land from Marion County to the Marion County Housing Authority.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. And now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Commissioner, would you please read that?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Under Board of Commissioners, approve orders reappointing Jane Downing, Allison Kelly, and Oregon State Representative Rick Lewis, and appointing Elizabeth Infante to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council with terms ending September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Approve election allocations for Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act funding for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, Title I, Title II, and Title III. And approve an order delegating authority to the Chief Administrative Officer to transfer a parcel of land from Marion County to the Marion County Housing Authority.
My second to motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. And now we'll move to our first item under action for Board of Commissioners. Matt Lawyer will join us to consider approval of the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs ODVA county grant application for ODVA funds in the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Willis. For the record, Matt Lawyer, policy analyst with the Board of Commissioners Office. Before you this morning is consideration of the Oregon Department of Veteran Affairs County Grant Application for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The allocation for Marion County is for the Veteran Service Office under contract with the Midland Valley Community Action Agency. The grant award this year is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. There are thirty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight, or two hundred and eighty-eight dollars in carry-forward funds from last year, and Marion County's allocation remains the same at fifty-one thousand, fourteen dollars. Staff's recommendation is that the Board approve the grant for the ODVA funds for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Matt. Commissioner, do you have any questions regarding this, great application?
I do not have any questions.
I don't either. Well, I don't, I think my only question is, is that this is on a kind of a three-year cycle with the RFP, and it's annually renewed, is that right?
I think that's correct. I can verify and get you a proper answer, though.
And so this is, I know this is the final year under the current contract with the current provider that we're working with, is that right?
I think that's correct, but again, I'll verify it and get back to you.
Yeah, I'm saying yes, so therefore, there'll be an RFP coming out in the future for the, for this program, for other organizations or all organizations to consider. So I don't have anything further. Would you make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs ODVA Grant, County Grant Application for ODVA Funds in the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars for fiscal years two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. And now we'll move on to Health and Human Services to consider approval of Amendment Number Eight to the Contract for Services with Advanced Security Incorporated to add four hundred thousand dollars for a new contract total of one million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand for unarmed security and patrol services for five Marion County locations through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Rhett, hi.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Rhett Martin, Administrative Services Division Director for Marion County Health and Human Services.
Is this your first time here?
It is.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
I feel like you've not been to that desk before.
This is my first time.
All right.
So I am here seeking approval for an Eighth Amendment to the Contract for Services with Advanced Security, Inc., to provide, or to add an additional four hundred thousand in funds for a new contract total of one million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand. Advanced Security, Inc., plays a key role in not only client but employee safety by providing unarmed security and patrol services for five Marion County health locations. These locations include our Silverton Road and Woodburn facilities, two of the Beverly Buildings, excuse me, and our current psychiatric crisis center location. And to date, we have nearly expended the current contract amount of one million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, and they annually bill approximately three hundred and fifty thousand, so your approval today of the four hundred thousand would allow for enough funds to last through the duration of the contract in June of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, so it's an expansion, so, which means, like, are you just each year not going out for an RFP because you can do some kind of a direct allocation?
Yeah, so the original contract was from June twenty-seventeen through twenty-nineteen, and it allowed for extensions not to exceed June twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
So the first seven amendments were essentially adding or removing locations, clarifying contact info, extending into year increments, and then adding funds. And so this is the Eighth Amendment and will, very well could be the final amendment as we go back out for an RFP when the contract is done in two thousand twenty-three.
Because this contract expires in two thousand twenty-three.
Correct.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Do you have any questions, Commissioners?
I do.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Number Eight to the Contract for Services with Advanced Security Incorporated to add four hundred thousand dollars for a new contract total of one million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for unarmed security and patrol services for five Marion County locations through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
My second to motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it.
And now we'll move on to Public Works to consider an ordinance to amend Chapter fifteen point ten of the Marion County Code to update the county's construction, erosion, and sediment control ordinance to be consistent with the county's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit. Matt and Max, that's like a movie, like Mad Max?
I've gotten that a few times.
I think you have. Would you move the microphone closer to you, please? Thanks.
Is that better?
Yeah.
That's not very well. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matt Knudsen. I'm the Environmental Services Program Supervisor with Public Works.
And my name is Max Hepburn. I am the Land Development Engineering and Permit Supervisor with Public Works.
And today, we are bringing forward a proposed amendment to Chapter fifteen-ten Marion County Code. This is an amendment to the Construction, Erosion, and Sediment Control Ordinance, and this derives from the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit. This is a federally required permit, meaning that the county is required to apply for this permit for discharging to waters of the state. The permit is six parts, including outreach and education, public involvement, construction erosion, post-construction, illicit discharge, as well as our good housekeeping within Public Works. Noncompliance for the permit is twenty-five thousand dollars per day per violation. And so today, we're bringing forward this amendment to the code so that we achieve permit So this project originates many years ago, about five years ago. I participated on a committee with the Department of Environmental Quality. We included Home Builders Association and other members to this committee, developing the requirements that we would be under. Part of that was kind of a negotiation to kind of make sure that Marion County's, the impact of Marion County was going to be relevant to the potential regulations that we would have, so that it made sense and it was clear. Some of the goals that we have as far as the Construction, Erosion, and Sediment Control Ordinance is to make sure that we increase clarity for home builders, developers, property owners, as well as our own staff, as well as meet the minimum standards that's required by DEQ. The kind of process that we went through is we met internally, we met with Board of Commissioners, and then we also reached out to a consulting group, Brown and Caldwell, and they helped us get through the process of making sure we are meeting minimum requirements. The outreach process for, for the developing this ordinance, as well as future engineering standards, is we did internal reviews with code enforcement, legal counsel, and members of Public Works. And then we did, we did two large work sessions, as well as we met with our advisory committee, the Marion Water Quality Advisory Committee, and that group consists of the Home Builders Association, watershed councils, agricultural community, and at-large members of the community. We also had two work sessions with the board, as well as three management updates. Sorry about that, I missed the slide. So the process for adopting the amendment to the code, as well as our engineering standards, today, we're here to do the first reading of this ordinance, and then we'll be back two weeks or later to do the second reading, as well as a board order to adopt the engineering standards. The area that this impacts, our MPDS permit requires us to regulate stormwater in the areas that are in red on the screen. These areas came about because of the U.S. Census Bureau's data for urban density surrounding the city of Salem, and then we also have kind of a pocket up north in Butteville. So this is the area that this ordinance would impact. So the, what we're talking about as far as the actual on-the-ground, what this looks like to a developer or a home builder, this is primarily around erosion control on construction sites, so any kind of runoff that could occur because we're disturbing land. This also impacts Public Works and what we do. So the, the main best management practices around erosion control are covering ground surface, stabilizing, stabilizing, revegetating, as well as the controls that you see on the screen, wattles, silt fences, things like that, that we kind of see out on construction sites these days. Some of the background to this is this is an amendment to code, so we already, we already actually have a code that originates back in two thousand and ten. The code primarily focuses on two, two areas, what we call a large development, one acre and above, as well as, as well as high-risk sites, so sites that are within a high-risk area, unstabilized soils, high slopes, as well as within, within, with, within a buffer of a waterway. The intent is to reduce turbidity in the, in surface water, so any kind of water that we're, we're discharging to waters of the state, we're reducing that turbidity through those best-practiced practices and controls. And the draft ordinance that you see today was prepared by county staff, as well as the advisory committee. So kind of going back over the highlights of the existing code is, it primarily is for displaced soil erosion from construction sites. The program currently is administered within our Land Development Engineering Permits Group, and they, they work through the process with a builder or developer taking, taking the permits and then, and then do inspections for compliance. To give you an idea of what that high-risk map I was, I was discussing about earlier, this is the high-risk map. One of the major changes is that we are reducing, we are reducing a lot of the different levels that somebody needs to come in and comply with. We're creating one level by reducing the threshold to a quarter of an acre. The high-risk map goes away, as well as large development is just one single permit. So when a, when a developer comes in for application, they'll have kind of a one-stop-shop that they won't have to seek clarity, and staff won't have to seek clarity. they won't have to seek clarity, and staff won't have to seek clarity.
So Matt stole my thunder a little bit.
Oh.
So first bullet point.
Be sure to introduce yourself for the record.
Oh, for the record, Max Hepburn, Land Development Engineering and Permit Supervisor with Marion County Public Works. So as Matt was alluding to, the code amendment that we've drafted up and had reviewed by the Water Quality Advisory Committee simplifies the applicability of the program from this kind of multifaceted, layered, kind of complex program to a simple quarter acre of ground disturbance. It removes that high-risk factor, if you will, on the previous map that Matt discussed, and removes the large development language that's created some confusion over the years. So we simplify to a single trigger, if you will, for our program, which is in conformance with the new MS4 requirements. To that effect, as the second bullet point mentions, reduction of that current trigger of one acre of ground disturbance down to a quarter. So it is going to capture some of those smaller developments currently that don't necessarily trigger our current requirements. In comparison, we are currently, under the MS4, classified as a small community, which puts us at that quarter acre trigger, as opposed to a large community, which is a five thousand square foot trigger for ground disturbance. So we are at a higher threshold than a large community is under this MS4 permit. While it's not part of the code amendment, we are continuing our status as a qualified local program with DEQ's 1200 CN program that allows us to administer that on behalf of DEQ to operate as a one-stop shop for developers and builders in that stormwater management area. So it is a benefit for us to be a participant in that program for projects between one to five acres. Part of the code amendment actually clarifies the pathway for developers to be able to sell either independent lots or independent phases of larger common plans of development, and maintain that the county has an erosion control permit on that site, and the actual builder of that phase is responsible, rather than the overall developer of the subdivision. There hasn't been a clear process for that over the years, so this code amendment provides We understand that this is an additional cost that is going to be placed on developers and builders. The cost could range, as far as we can analyze, between a couple hundred and a couple thousand dollars, depending on what erosion control measures may be needed to be placed on the properties for development. From some recent county projects, we had costs in the range of three to about ten thousand dollars. So keep in mind, those are prevailing wage and typically larger projects. So the permit process isn't changing all that much. It really is just changing that trigger from that current one acre threshold down to a quarter. Anything larger than five acres, or five acres or more, requires a DEQ 1200C, so that is our cutoff, if you will, is five acres for our program. A plan provided by the applicant is part of the permit application process and is required to be on-site as part of the permit and the code amendment, and adjustments and modifications may be needed to those plans as site conditions change, which is also outlined in the code amendment. It also establishes through the amendment that regular county and applicant inspections are required, which is an MS4 requirement of the program itself. So several of these items are just clarification to current processes and procedures the county has.
I didn't steal all your thunder.
And back to you?
Yes. So for the implementation side of this, if the board decides to move forward with amending code fifteen ten, we have already provided early notification to builders and the engineering community that this ordinance is proposed, as well as many have participated along in the process of developing this code, as well as the engineering standards. We anticipate with any new change that it will take a little bit for folks to catch up. So part of inspection process is providing education and warnings, rather than penalizing upfront. So part of the process is just making sure that we're providing adequate outreach and education to our construction community. And then finally, just kind of the implementation side of things, most of this will actually very much simplify the process. So implementation should move a lot smoother, both internally, as well as externally with our customers. And then finally, staff would recommend that the board adopts this ordinance that's being proposed.
Thank you. Do you have any questions on this? I feel like this was, no offense, one of the most boring, most intriguing things I've ever experienced as a commissioner in our session on it, and it seems very daunting, like it's a very, I think, overwhelming task for folks, developers and whatnot, to kind of, for me, if I was them, and I'm not, to consider all the hoops you have to jump through. So I think it's great that your department has really kind of streamlined that process, and that you had input from members of our community that will be greatly impacted by the change.
Yeah, I mean, as we talked about this in the board session, this is going to harm developers, it's going to make housing more expensive, and there's nothing we can do about it. So sooner we just get this over with and move on, the better.
Yeah, I'm sure that's exactly, it'll just be done like that. I'm sure we will hear from all kinds of people, but I just, I think it's important for all the people in Marion County who are going to develop here to understand that you all did everything you possibly could to make this as seamless as possible, the painless part, we have no control over. But, you know, November is right on the corner. Elections matter. Okay.
All right. Madam Chair, I would make a motion that the chair read the ordinance by title only twice.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes, and I will now read the ordinance title by title only twice. An Ordinance Amending Chapter Fifteen Point Ten of the Marion County Code. An Ordinance Amending Chapter Fifteen Point Ten of the Marion County Code. It may have been the shortest title in history. Yet it's.
Totally underrepresented all the work that you guys have put in.
It's very underwhelming.
We can make them longer titles.
Whatever you want to do. All right, thank you for being here. And this will be back in two weeks on board session on nine twenty-eight to make final. Thanks for being here, and thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I was just going to mention that this will be coming back before the board for a second reading in two weeks.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, and still, under Public Works, we are going to move to consider approval of amendment number one to the incoming funds in our governmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to add one million eight hundred thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents for a contract total of one million one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, of which an estimated amount of one million eight hundred thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents will be paid with federal funds, and the county will provide an estimated one hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents for the Connecticut Avenue-McLay Road to Ricky Street pedestrian and bicycle improvement project through May fifteenth, 2030. Seriously? Like, I mean, my third grade skills just were improved. Ryan.
Good morning. For the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Capital Projects Manager with Public Works. As you said, we're here to talk about our Connecticut Avenue Urban Widening Project. The project's located in East Salem, between Corden Road and Lancaster, just off of McLay. So currently, there are sidewalks and bike lanes on the east side of the roadway, but no facilities or limited facilities on the west side. You can kind of see in these photos just how limited the shoulder is. So our proposed project would improve the corridor by adding sidewalks and bike lanes on that west side of the road, replace any noncompliant ADA ramps, upgrade the large concrete Refuge Island near the intersection of Connecticut and McLay, and finally, construct just our normal stormwater upgrades, treatment, detention, and conveyance. So amendment one to this contract, we are currently only funded for preliminary engineering. So this amendment actually adds funding for right-of-way acquisition and construction. We got preliminary engineering funding in the last dip cycle, so we weren't able to get this funding until they approved the new state transportation improvement program, which goes from twenty-four to twenty-seven. So this increase in federal funds, it's an increase in eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty dollars in federal funding for a new total project estimate of one million one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. So that includes, as you said, one million eight thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents in federal funds, and a required match, the ten point two seven percent match we're required to do in all federal projects of one hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents in county funds. And our schedule is currently, we've begun design, as I said, it was funded previously in 2020. We hope to begin right-of-way acquisition in 2023 and construct in 2024. With that, I'd open it up to any questions.
So I'm trying to visualize this area. Is, why was this section of this road chosen?
So if you look at the map, Hock Middle School is just to the, I've got my directions to ground, south of the project.
Okay.
So we actually are improving it, there's a lot of children who walk through this area, and pedestrians and bikers.
Perfect, thank you. That's what I was looking for. It's a kid-related thing. Great, I don't have any more questions, do you?
No.
Okay, I'll take the motion.
I just wish it would get done faster. Madam Chair, I move that we approve amendment number one to the incoming funds in our governmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to add one million eight thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Eight hundred thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. One million eight hundred thousand five hundred and sixty-four.
Nope, nope.
It is eight, we got it wrong both times.
Yep.
Well, third grade failed.
To add one million eight thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents for a new contract total of one million one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, of which an estimated amount of one million eight thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents will be paid with federal funds, and the county will provide an estimated one hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents for the Connecticut Avenue-McLay Road to Ricky Street Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvement Project through March fifteenth, 2030.
I'll second the motion. What does the ODOT funds come from? Is that like a federal, like, road tax or gas tax?
That's a good question. I actually don't know the origination of those funds, but what they are, they are coming through the SCATS funding that we get, Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study. So SCATS actually awarded that project, and I shouldn't know it, but they, I don't know the original source of that money.
Okay, no, that's fine. I don't know it either, and I'm on SCATS. So it was, I think it was awarded before I became a commissioner. Like, yeah, Lonnie's shaking her head yes, because I don't remember this discussion. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Ryan. And you're saying, to consider approval of the public improvement agreement with Hamilton Construction Company in the amount of three million three hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars for the construction of River Road South, Willamette River, Independence Bridge, is it scour repairs?
Correct.
Project through December thirty-first, 2025.
All right, again, for the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Public Works Capital Projects Manager. This project's located southwest of Salem, near Independence. It's one of our main bridges that crosses the Willamette and crosses into Fulton County. So the project's scope includes constructing riprap and sheet pile scour column repairs or protecting those piers from scour, so that's when the water essentially moves to silt and other river bottom material out from underneath these piers and would impact the foundation of the bridge. So to do that, we're going to use large rock, but most of the work actually comes from what it takes to get in there and do it. So we have temporary traffic control, erosion control, like they just talked about, but it's in the river, and then temporary work bridges, coffer dams, de-watering, an access road to get down to that bridge that's fairly substantial. And then, once we're done, we'll restore any impact we had down near the river, put it back to the way that the vegetation was, plant trees, shrubs, seed, and leave it as good as we found it. So we bid this project, our low bid was Hamilton Construction, at three million three hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Again, this is a federally funded project, or not federally, sorry, it was originally a federally funded project. We use the SFLP, or state-funded local programs, process to swap that for state funding, and so the state funding provides eighty-nine point seven-three percent, or two million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-one, and the county will have, be responsible for ten point two seven percent, or three hundred and forty thousand three hundred and eighty-five. And construction, so we're awarding the contract now, but they have to do this work in what's called an in-water work window, so we can't go and get in the river in the winter, essentially. So by awarding it now, they can start getting supplies, having that riprap produced that they're going to need, because it's large and not a lot of people make it, so they'll be ready to go next summer. There may be a little work, cutting in access roads and outside of the river in the spring, but most of this work will incur next summer. One last thing that I missed that I wanted to add, so I think you all may be familiar with it, an upcoming structural retrofit project, that is not this.
Oh, I was going to add, look at you saying.
We have heard that we will get funding through the local program, local bridge program for that project in an upcoming year.
So what does this mean for access over the bridge? Does the bridge get closed during either project?
No, people honestly, for this project, people other than the ones who live close enough that they can see down to the river likely won't even know we're there.
Okay.
Our work bridges will be below the bridge, we're going to put up signing for boaters so that we protect the boaters who use the river.
That's right.
Yeah, there is, but as far as the roadway users, it'll be a minimal impact.
And then on the wait project in the future, will that impact access?
We are at the very beginning of that one, I'm not quite sure on that one yet. As we develop what those fixes are and how we access, the big thing on that one is how we access below the bridge, and that will determine what our impact is, whether we have to come up with some kind of a situation where we access from above and close a lane.
So when do you do that? And I'm just looking at Lonnie, I hope you do some good public outreach in advance before you make your plan, because we heard from one of the largest farmers in Marion County out there that they rely on that bridge during harvest season, and we do not want to shut down their harvest access. I don't know if you can work around that, right, but it would be really ideal if you could.
One of the things we do on these projects is we do have a robust public outreach process, especially when it's federal funding like that will be. And so we have multiple public meetings, we really try to get letters out to the area, post on Facebook, let them know to come to our public meetings and give us that input. And then we do sometimes look for targeted outreach if we know we're going to have an impact on somebody. But we don't want to miss the small people either, so we make sure we're having those meetings, having them come in and talk to us. And honestly, we get a lot of really good information from the folks who live around these projects.
Good, thank you. Commissioner, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, then I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the public improvement agreement with Hamilton Construction Company, in amount three million three hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars for the construction of River Road South, Willamette River, Independence Bridge, scour repairs project through December thirty-first, 2025.
I'll second the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right, and we'll now pause our regular board meeting and go into a public hearing under Public Works, item A, public hearing to consider an appeal of the hearing's officer decision denying administrative review, AR case number two-two dash zero zero one, Dustin and Canoe, Canoe Barth, sorry about that, Austin. Do you need the file?
Oh, no, I've got it.
Oh, good, because I think I need it.
I'll have to bring a copy now, it'll be.
Oh, good for you. I was afraid about this part.
Ready?
I'm writing when you are.
Awesome. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Austin Barnes, Marion County Public Works Planning Division, five-one-five-five, Silverton Road Northeast. The item before you today is an application for administrative review to place a primary farm dwelling on a twenty-acre parcel in an EFU exclusive farm use zone located in the eight thousand block of Denison Road southeast, which is just outside of Sublimity. The applicants are proposing to place a primary farm dwelling on the subject property using the farm income standards. So this subject property is located on the east side of Denison Road, point three miles north of its intersection with Coon Hollow Road. So this subject property is located on the east side of Dennison Road, point three miles north of its intersection with Coon Hollow Road. The property is vacant and is farmed in conjunction with the parcel directly south. That was leased at the time of the application and is now being separately farmed for Christmas trees. The property had roughly two acres of Christmas trees planted at the time of application. Since then, as will be described, more Christmas trees have been planted. Property is described indeed in its present configuration on June fifth, nineteen seventy-four, and is therefore considered legal for land use purposes. Surrounding uses are farm uses in all directions with all adjacent parcels and EFU, and planted with various farm crops. The area has a mix of farm parcels with dwellings and farm parcels without dwellings. Most parcels in the area are over forty acres with a few smaller ones to the west created through a measure thirty-seven and forty-nine approval. The Planning Division requested comments from various governmental agencies. Those that provided comments were the Marion County Department of Public Works, Land Development, Engineering and Permits, Friends of Marion County, and Marion County Building Inspection. These comments are located in the staff memo and the file for reference. There's no streams, wildlife habitat, geological hazards, or flood zones identified on the property, and the proposal should not affect air quality or natural resources in the area. So back on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, staff gave a decision of denial, and this was based on the fact that the applicant stated that the parcel had an income of eighty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. But with the trees being planted in the same year, it was impossible to raise them to a sellable height and maturity to generate this income. The same reasoning can be used for the income in two thousand twenty-two where the same amount of money was invoiced, and the crop would have been greatly diminished from the previous year's harvest on a small planted area. And additionally, the trees would have only been two years old at this time. It takes approximately six to eight years for Christmas trees to mature to a sellable height. And in the original application, the applicant statement stated that the contract for Christmas trees had produced an income of eighty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The staff concluded that the future sale of a Christmas tree is not a farm product and is not a harvested farm product. It does not constitute the sale of a farm crop, as no crop has actually changed hands. Applicant then filed for a reconsideration that was denied on March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Supplemental information was submitted regarding the invoices and dates of the seedling purchases. And the applicant also presented a new narrative arguing that staff incorrectly determined that a crop must be harvested to constitute farm use. Staff still concludes that a crop must be harvested to constitute farm use. But some other additional information I wanted to add into the record is, you know, as you guys have already read through the case, you know, staff has concluded that a crop must be harvested to constitute farm use. And beyond that, there's just some additional information I'd like to like, just to speak about at this time. So, and stated in my emails to Mr. Wilson, the trees were sold six to ten years before maturity and at U-Pick prices, but were sold in a wholesale fashion. Now, staff believes this is sort of a manipulation of the free market where trees are sold at a price that only is fetched in U-cut but is being sold in a wholesale fashion. And as is stated in the Friends of Marion County's comments in their submission, the crops were actually sold to the parents of, I'm gonna, sorry, I just heard you pronounce a name. It's, I'm gonna butcher it. It's not, Canoe. The parents of Canoe were the ones that actually bought the trees from the bars. And so at this time, you know, staff doesn't believe these were actually sold to an actual Christmas tree farmer, and they won't actually be put into the open market. And there's no guarantee that in the six years it will take to mature them, that they will survive drought. And additionally, the original house building permit was applied for on September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, which I then reviewed the building permit on November fourth, two thousand twenty-one. And I ended up finding no home site approval on the parcel, no administrative review. So I reached out basically asking, have you guys done an administrative review, or are we just missing it in the files, or are you guys planning to do one? And then administrative review was submitted on January sixth, two thousand twenty-two, which is three days after the second check was submitted for the invoice of the fifteen hundred Christmas trees. So staff, staff at this time does not believe it was their intention to apply for this type of permit to gain a home site. I believe it was potentially that they thought they could build on the parcel without using this home site, and then the application was created afterwards. Whether or not that is true or not, that is just, you know, other anecdotal information that I believe is pertinent to the record that I think shows that this, this home, at least right now, without the crops being harvested, doesn't constitute a primary farm dwelling. It could in the future when the crops are harvested, but staff currently recommends denial for the application as the crops are not harvested off the subject property.
Okay.
And I'll stand for any questions you guys have.
I have a few, but you go.
I just have one. First, Austin, I want to say thank you. I think you did a good job in this case and investigating it and trying to work with the applicants. But my question is, the planning staff's position that a crop must be harvested to constitute farm income. Is that, that hasn't been definitively held by the Oregon Supreme Court, has it? That's, that's a internal interpretation of the, of the code?
I think, is this about like harvested in the same year or harvested in general?
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking when we, because that's not what the, it's not what the law says, at least as I'm reading the black letter. That seems to be an interpretation of the law. And the only reason I bring it up, and I, I think this case is hard because we're like, six years is a long time, like to have a contract and then, and then be delivering on that contract six years later, that's a long time. But I know a lot of farmers that they'll have contracts before their crops are actually harvested. And so I think that's sort of my question, is it, is it just from a, outside of the land use context? In my mind, I know farmers who have income at a different time than when the crops are actually pulled out of the ground. So I guess that's just sort of in my mind. I'm wondering if that's something that the, that is sort of our interpretation of the code or if it's something that, that
I mean.
The court has held somewhere.
I, well, I don't know that there's case law from this board necessarily luba about the actual harvesting, whether it needs to take place in the year or the years after. I just, the way, the way staff looks at it is the definition of farm use says the crops must be harvested, and at this point, I haven't seen, seen harvesting taking place.
When you say the definition says they must be harvested, can you read, can you read that definition?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Because I.
Yeah, well, but the hearing's officers specifically spoke to this and said that there's no timeline in the harvest. They, the crop does have to be harvested, but I, but she says there's no timeline. Is that correct?
I disagree, but that is what she said.
Well, that's okay if you disagree, but that is what she found, correct?
That's what she found, yeah.
Right, but I just, I want to find the harvested language.
Yeah, I got it right here for you.
I had a cool lawyer give me some information, so.
So the definition of farm use means the current employment of land for the primary purpose of obtaining a profit in money by raising, harvesting, and selling crops, or the feeding, breeding, management sale of, and it trails off. But that's, that's where harvesting comes from.
Right, but, but that's an and, not an or, right? So when I'm.
Yeah, so raising, harvesting, and selling crops. So to me, we haven't harvested the crops yet.
You have to do, so your interpretation of this is you have to do all three of those things in order for it to constitute farm use?
Correct.
But the, but the timing of it is, is not, because, so when I read this, it's, it's the primary purpose of, right? So you're, the current employment of land for the primary purpose of obtaining a profit in money by raising, harvesting, and selling crops, right?
Correct.
So if you're, if you're employing land, and your primary purpose in employing that land is obtaining a profit by raising, harvesting, and selling crops, then that's farm use, right? And so if, I guess that's sort of my question is, is that, when that intersects with the other part of the code, because I think what the applicants are arguing here is, we've, we've obtained, the, the code says basically I have to have a certain amount of income.
Yeah.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
I've got the income.
Mm-hmm.
And the primary purpose of my using this land was to raise, harvest, and sell Christmas trees. And I have a contract that says that I'm doing that. And so since I've made the income, I qualify for the house, right? That's sort of their interpretation. And I think the, the question that I have is, and I, and I guess this is, your position is, what that means is that you actually have to take whatever you're growing out of the ground. Having the income is not enough. You actually have to have the income and somebody has to take the crops from your property.
Yeah, I didn't want to set precedence and basically have other folks think they could apply for, you know, putting a crop in the ground, having someone pay them eighty thousand dollars twice for it, and then build a house and rip the crop from the ground.
Yeah, no, I totally understand, and I agree with that. And that's why, that's why I said good job, because I, because I agree with that, right? The problem with this sort of situation is, somebody plants some seedlings, right? They get the approval, and they mow the seedlings under.
Yeah.
And, so, so I'm, I agree with that.
Yeah, that's what I struggled with.
I just wanted to clarify the law on this, because I could see a situation where if, if you have, if you have a guarantee that they're actually going to harvest whatever the crop is, and they've been paid for that crop, then just sort of, a reading of the law would seem to say, well, they've got the income in farm use, they should be able to build on their, their property. I agree that in this case, like, six to eight years from now, that's a, it's hard, hard to guarantee that they're actually going to get, get these trees out. But I guess maybe we should let the applicant talk about how that, how that's going to work out.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's definitely more information to be discussed. I think two, two other pieces, and I know Friends of Marion County will speak on this, but in the last hearing, they had brought evidence that in Oregon, real property law states that a tree still in the ground is still property and not a product or harvested yet. So that, that's just one piece. That's not something I even brought up, but they brought up that made me sort of like, you know, rethink of things, it kind of bolstered the argument. Secondly, is, is that, which I'm now blanking on, the second thing I was going to think about or say. I mean, that's really, oh, oh, it's the, it's the anecdotal evidence from the neighbors, like you're talking about the guarantee from being able to actually sell these trees in six years. That's like a, potentially a tough guarantee to say is, I have, they haven't submitted comments, so this isn't technically in the record, but it's just some phone calls to me. But a lot of the neighbors have called me to state that they think most of the seedlings died from the droughts last year. They don't think they're going to actually survive to maturity to make this money.
Well, the reason why I bring this up is because, like, let's say you have somebody who's growing grass seed or something, right? And they have a grass seed contract. And let's say that they, you know, have year one, they harvest it, they sold it, and then they've sold year two, but they're like, you know, six months out from harvest or something, right? If it's an enforceable contract with an arm's length buyer, I don't think we should jam them up and say, well, you can't submit a permit for six months, right? If you have, if somebody paid you for that crop, and they're going to come get it, or you're going to compensate them to the tune of whatever they're owed, that feels to me like an enforceable contract that you could go to court over, and that seems like that's farm use, that's income. That, so I guess that's, the, the reason I bring it up is because I don't want, I don't want to set precedent the other way. Like, I don't want to set precedent that says, you know, you can fake it. But I also don't want to set precedent that says you actually have real farm income, but because of our interpretation, you know, we're going to jam you and make you wait an extra however long.
Definitely, and I would just like to add to the record that I believe the, the contract for the actual sale and purchase and of these trees was submitted to us about a week ago, maybe this week. So we didn't, until now, there was previously no contract.
I saw, and I, and I think there's, again, at least from what I, when I reviewed it, there was no date certain for harvest of the trees, and there's a sort of a lack of details there that, yeah.
Definitely new information at this hearing now from previous ones.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
We'll, I'll probably drag you back up here.
Definitely.
Okay, so we're going to move on to our sign-up sheet. And usually, we go with the testimony and support first, and then opposition. But I'm just curious, since Roger's here, and he's the only one for opposition, if you're fine, if I bring him forward, and then we can move into the applicant and your testimony. So Roger, if you'd come forward, please. Okay. Called first? Surprise! That's the best part about being in the chairs. I can, you know, make this all exciting. I hope I can see the contract.
It was email, it was email from the person.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
By the way, I had a lot of trouble hearing both the commissioners and staff because you have to really speak into the phone, into the microphone. Even when you're reading something, you have to speak into the microphone. So I just want to say for the future, for the future, that the commissioners and the people that come over there make, make an effort to speak more loudly into the microphone.
We will do so, thank you.
I have, I have additional information. I need a copy for each of the commissioners, please.
Thank you. If you'd just go ahead and give it to Scott up here.
Again, I have to apologize for the, for how late I am on the submission of my latest letter, but the applicant sent these things in at the last moment. And I didn't have an opportunity to send those in advance to staff. So I don't know where to, where to begin.
First, would you introduce yourself for the.
Roger Kay, President, Friends of Marion County, P.O. Box three-two-seven-four, Salem, nine-seven-three-oh-two.
Thank you.
I guess I should start with the most important issues, and that would be, one thing is the contract, because everyone is talking about a contract. And I don't know if you've received or had an opportunity to review the applicant's tree sales agreement. And basically, my letter addresses what's wrong with this agreement. And I also have some comments from our attorney, which he emailed just this morning. Apparently, this is a hastily drawn agreement, signed and dated just yesterday, the twelfth, which is, this is when I started writing this. So it's dated the twelfth. I just started writing this letter yes, last night. The buyer has agreed to purchase Christmas trees from the seller's property located at eighty-twenty Dennison Road, Sublimity. This address does not exist, and presumably, the applicant is describing the twenty-acre parcel that we're discussing today. This is an AR application, does not have a dwelling on it. So the applicant, so if the county decides to send any notices or information to the applicant at this address, it will be returned undeliverable. So I just want to make sure that the applicant, Dustin Barth and Kenno Barth, have a P.O. Box six-three-four, Sublimity, Oregon, nine-seven-three-oh-five. And if that's not correct, they can come up and correct that information. After that, I looked at the Oregon State Business Registration Database for Dustin Barth and Kenno Barth. Barth brought his tree farm, and it was E-filed December first, two thousand twenty. And the sellers, I'm sorry, those are the sellers, the buyers also have an LLC called R and R Tree Sales, E-filed May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. So the, let me see, the owner and seller of Barth Brothers' Tree Farm is Kenno Barth, and the owner and buyer of R and R Tree Sales LLC is Rhonda Perry. I think we've already discussed this in our previous letters to you, that there's a personal relationship between the two parties. And this constitutes a suspicious transaction for the purpose of gaining a dwelling on this property. Because this is again, a non-arm's-length transaction, which I've referred to in my earlier comments, about difference between an arm's-length transaction and one that is not. And the other issue is seller obligations in section three D. If for some unforeseen reason seller does not sell a property, seller agrees to place a deed restriction on the property, reserving the rights to the three thousand noble Christmas trees. reserving the rights to the three thousand noble Christmas trees to buyer. This is, uh, must, I must say, a very, very unusual part of an agreement, and likely unenforceable. There is no recorded deed restriction in the record of this case. And for the county to accept this agreement as anything but another attempt by the sellers and buyers to disguise a non, non-arm's-length transaction as legitimate business decision, we have aerial photographic evidence clearly showing there were no Christmas trees harvested in twenty-one of twenty-two. And again, the requirement is for harvested crop in two consecutive years must be substantiated, and the applicant has not done, so... That's the, the latest information on this. We've also, let me see here. Since, let me see, what I wanna say. Since the, the BOC is not fully in attendance today, although you do have a quorum, I would request, uh, two things. One, that the, uh, there'd be an open record period of fourteen days to give the BOC member who's not present an opportunity to, to review and examine all of the submitted evidence today. Although you have a quorum and can vote on this, I would propose a fourteen-day open day period. Also, that we would need sufficient time to review this agreement, because I don't think it's, can withstand a, a court decision or a legal, or a legal argument. Going on, as I will here. Again, I made some particular notes after the, uh, staff made a presentation. And again, uh, when you take a look at the, the invoices and the payments, it does not specify from which property these trees were sold. So it doesn't say they're grown, harvested, and sold from the applicant's property applying for a dwelling. There's no indication of that. And also, there's no indication, as I think the BOC mentioned, of any, uh, agreement to buy or sell trees from this property in this recent agreement. I don't know if I wanna go through all of the visual evidence. It was all in the record. We showed applicants, we showed, uh, Google Maps aerial photography of the parcel in 2019. Also in 2018, this was a year even before the Barth bought that property. And there were no, and there's no indication of any Christmas trees planted in 2018, 2019, 2021. If there had been any, uh, it doesn't show up in the Google Maps. It just shows a, you know, a plowed or tilled brown field. Also submitted, uh, visual evidence of the neighbor's property, which is not this property, but the neighbor's property, over a two-year period, one before the Christmas trees were harvested there and one afterward. And you could see a definite growth of Christmas trees and a definite, uh, removal of them in the timeframe of these two map pictures. So there are no trees there when bought, when the Barths bought the property. There were no trees there in 2021 or 2022. And, uh, that's all on visual evidence. I also included something that our attorney sent me about a, uh, a case. I have to find all of that. This is in Jackson County. Uh, this was a case where the applicant, um, applied for a, not a farm dwelling, but it was a, I think, another dwelling on a property, maybe for, I can't remember exactly for what purpose. Maybe for farm use, for relatives' use. And in that case, um, my attorney said to display this diagram, which is already submitted in the record, of sixty acres that the DuPonts claim they had a hundred and sixty acres of farms, but aerial photos suggest only about sixty. So they provided evidence in the record, in that case, of a diagram of the field in that, that was mentioned in that case. So this is, uh, and in this, in this case, they show that this is not credible and real, uh, evidence to support their application. And likewise, uh, we do the same. There is no credible information that these trees were farmed, that they were harvested and sold, and that is the main criteria in state law. Harvested, and in another, in an earlier letter, in an earlier letter, I presented information about what the definition of harvesting means. It means actually crops that are taken from the ground and removed, and in this case, apparently sold. But there were no crops in the ground to be sold. So the applicant doesn't meet, uh, the three requirements of that statement of, uh, s, you know, planted, harvested, and sold. I don't know what else I have offhand. I didn't wanna read all of this stuff. I have pages and pages of information, and it's all in the record. So what I wanna do is, unfortunately, read my attorney's letter, if you'll bear with me. This was sent by email this morning. And again, it should be allowed in the record, but who knows what the county's gonna allow or not? So I'm gonna read it. It's not very long. If I can find it.
I believe it was sent to us. And if you read it, it's in the record, so go ahead and read it.
Is it in the record?
Uh, I, did you receive it, Brenda? Austin, did you receive? Okay, so we have not received it, so why don't you read it into the record?
That's what I'd like to do.
That would be great.
Because it was sent to the planning department, was sent to your office.
Yeah, they were probably on their way here.
Before the hearing began.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I know that the evidence submitted at the time of the hearing, before the final decision, is part of the record.
I'm happy for you to read it now.
Okay. Let me locate it here. If you'll give me a moment. Technology. I know what the problem is, I need a mouse. There we are. Okay, this is a letter sent by our attorney, Andrew Mulkey, One Thousand Friends of Oregon, dated today. And it was sent before the hearing began this morning to the planning staff and to the board office. It's gonna take a little bit, it's three pages.
Well, I don't have it to read myself, so go for it.
So this is, I'm reading his letter.
Correct.
And he represents us in this case.
Mm-hmm.
On behalf of Friends of Marion County, please accept the following testimony for the record in AR twenty-two dash zero zero one, application by Dustin and Ken O'Barth for farm dwelling. This is bolded. The hearings officer correctly concluded that the applicants do not qualify for a dwelling in conjunction with the farm use of the subject property. Contrary to the applicant's assertion, the hearings officer did not rely on uncodified criteria to deny the application. Rather, the applicants simply failed to provide credible evidence that they met the approval criteria for farm dwelling. The app, excuse me. The applicant's arguments that the decision-maker cannot make a credibility determination is wrong. The applicant has the burden of proof and the burden of persuasion to establish that facts required to meet the approval criteria. In that context, the decision-maker absolutely has the ability to determine whether the evidence or statements presented by the applicant is credible and can be relied upon. In this case, the hearings officer determined that the applicants did not provide credible evidence that the invoices, receipts, and expenditures were actually related to the sale of a farm crop grown on the subject property. Although the applicants produced evidence of a purported sale of farm crops, the hearings officer determined that legitimacy of the sale transactions are at issue. In other words, although a total of a hundred and sixty thousand appears to have changed hands, did the buyer actually intend the eighty thousand payments to be for the purch, for the purchase of Christmas trees grown on the property? Given that buyers are the applicant's in-laws, do the transfers actually represent payment for purchase of Christmas trees at all? As the hearings officer pointed out, staff accurately notes that the acreage planted could not reasonably generate an excess of eighty thousand dollars at market rate or large enough to support back-to-back years. It is worth noting that the applicant's first round of Christmas trees planted died due to drought. The applicants have not shown that their most recent planting in 2022 survived the summer. In that case, there is no crop to sell. The applicants report that they have sold the crop twice for successive years without actually showing that they can produce back-to-back annual harvests of Christmas trees on a subject property in sufficient quantities to justify a market price of eighty thousand dollars. In that context, the hearings officer correctly doubted the applicant's evidence actually met the approval criteria. The applicant's evidence that they deposited money in their account does not actually provide proof of farm income earned in the last two years in conjunction with farm use of the subject property. See ORS two one five two eight three one E, two one five two seven nine, and OAR six six zero zero three three zero one three five, parentheses, four. Although the applicants can show that they received payments of eighty thousand dollars for the last two years, the hearings officer questioned whether the applicants had demonstrated those payments actually represented income generated from the sale of trees that will be grown or harvested on a subject property. The hearings officer noted that the farm incomes test requires, in relevant part, that the operator earned at least eighty thousand dollars in the last two years from the sale of farm products on the subject tract. The evidence submitted by the applicants does, does not meet their burden. The hearings officer rejected the applicant's claims that they received income that exceeded eighty thousand dollars from the sale of farm products from the subject tract. The hearings official determined that the applicant's purported sale transaction is not commercially reasonable, potentially unenforceable, and not credible. Among the lesson, among the reasons, the hearings officer noted that the applicants failed to provide evidence, the kind of business record that would accompany a legitimate transaction for the sale of trees, much less a sale of trees that will be harvested at a future date from the subject property. First, the applicants did not submit any contracts for the sale of the Christmas trees. In other words, the applicants failed to provide substantial evidence of any connection between the subject tract and the trees referenced in the invoices. See HO decision citing Tiger Sand and Gravel in versus Clockmouth County thirty-three, O.R. Luba, one two four one three eight, parentheses, nineteen ninety-seven. The evidence supporting the application must be such that a reasonable person could only conclude that that applicable criteria is satisfied. The hearings official notes that there is no sales agreement or other document that establishes when the right of possession to the trees transfers and who is responsible for the tremendous outlay of costs until the time of harvest and who is responsible for the harvest itself. In short, there are no documents to establish that. The amount of money claimed by the applicants as farm income was produced by Christmas trees on the subject tract. The invoice combined, combined with the claims by the applicants that they would deliver harvested trees at us, at some unknown future date, allowed the applicant to provide the contracted number of trees from any location and satisfy the obligation with respect to the sale. The business location for Barth Brothers Tree Farms is also not the same as the subject property, which raises the possibility that the enforcers offer sales of trees grown somewhere other than the subject property. The hearings officer concludes that the evidence simply does not show what the applicants need to show to satisfy state and local law. I quote, "The evidence presented, including the invoices and the canceled checks, suggests that the reported gross income was not from the production of Christmas trees on the subject tract based upon the present determination of the price per tree. The breadth of the purported transaction, that is length of time before harvest, enhanced value, absence of terms for delivery or acceptance, is not supported by the two invoices and the payments." In conclusion, hearings officer, the hearings official did not rely on factors outside of the approval criteria. The hearings officer correctly concluded that the evidence provided by the applicant did not demonstrate compliance with MCC one seven dot one three six dot zero three oh, parentheses, A one B. The applicants also failed to demonstrate compliance with the nearly identical standards in statute and OAR cited above. Moreover, the applicants failed to demonstrate that they have any ongoing farm use of the property. The applicants have not shown that any of the trees planted in 2022 have survived the extreme heat over the summer or could possibly be used to fulfill harvest with delivery of eighty thousand dollars' worth of Christmas trees to the applicant's in-laws at some unknown future date. The applicants do not explain how they resolve the sup, the supposed payment for trees in twenty-one that died. The applicants simply failed to demonstrate the income they claim counts as farm income, much less farm income derived from a farm crop grown on a subject property. The applicants failed to demonstrate that the partial tax document submitted was actually filed with or received by the IRS. For that reason, an unfiled portion of a tax form does not provide substantial evidence of farm income from the subject property. In bold, the recently executed contract does not provide substantial evidence of compliance with the approval criteria. The newly executed Christmas tree sales agreement from September twelfth, 2022 does not demonstrate compliance with the state and local criteria. First, the buyer is a newly formed entity that was created after the payments made in 2022 invoice was shown on the 2021 and 2022 payment receipts. See example one showing articles of incorporation for R&amp;R Tree Sales LLC filed in May, 2022. For that reason, statements made in the sale, sales contract are directly, are directly contradicted by the evidence in the record. The buyer in a sales contract did not agree to purchase Christmas trees from the subject property in 2021 or 2022. The buyer named in the contract did not exist in 2021 or in January, 2022. Moreover, the buyer and seller share the same principal place of residence. That continues to suggest that the businesses are not, in fact, unrelated and that any transaction between two entities is not, in fact, an arm's-length transaction between a legitimate buyer and seller. The applicants have not provided any evidence that R&amp;R Tree Sales LLC is actually in the business of selling harvested Christmas trees. Second, it is not clear whether a sales contract executed after the fact of a purported sale is even valid or enforceable. Again, many of those recitations in the sales contract are not accurate or true. The buyer could not have agreed to purchase fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred noble Christmas trees from seller in 2021 or 2022. The buyer did not exist on the dates those payments were made. The sales contract does not demonstrate that the applicant satisfied the criteria required to approve a dwelling in conjunction with farm use on a subject property. The timing of the documentation is extremely suspect and looks as though the applicant manufactured these transactions and belated sales agreement, not for the legitimate sale of Christmas trees, but instead to provide the appearance of compliance with the approval criteria provided, required for a dwelling on farm land. Finally, although it is possible for farmers and purchasers to contract for the sale of crops that have not yet been harvested, the prop, the possible future sale of Christmas trees on a subject property after these proceedings have concluded. on a subject property after these proceedings have concluded cannot be used to justify a decision to approve a dwelling in this case. As a matter of law, prior to harvest, the applicant cannot demonstrate that the, quote, "income" was actually derived from the sale of a farm crop. On its own, the sale of growing that yet unharvested Christmas trees does not provide evidence of a farm income earned from the subject property. That income is contingent upon the harvest and delivery of the trees. In this case, the county does not have a time machine, cannot determine whether the income was actually earned from the farm use of the subject property. The applicant has not demonstrated that the harvest has or will occur. For that reason, the hundred and sixty thousand dollars does not meet the applicable criteria. And with that, I'm out of breath.
Roger, can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
So stepping back from the details of this, and I admit, I agree with you that some of this stuff, there needs to be more evidence, in my opinion, that they're actually farming this. But let's say that they are farming this, and they do plant these trees, and they do harvest these trees, and they do sell these trees, and regardless of whether it's their relatives who are buying it from them or not, let's assume that actually a real transaction happens where the trees are harvested from their property, taken by the purchasers, money's exchanged. You wouldn't have any opposition to them building a house in that context, right?
I'm sorry, you're just asking for some speculation on my part, but I could say that I interviewed Christmas, one of the largest Christmas tree farmers with over a thousand acres of Christmas trees in production in Marion County, and that's in the record of my earlier letter. Silver, Silver Falls, is that the name? I can't remember offhand. And, you know, in my interview with him, I got to find out exactly what these trees would have cost and would have sold for had they been to maturity. And I think he said maybe thirty, thirty, forty dollars per tree at the maximum at that point. And again, in my letter, he sort of said that he would never accept contracts or write contracts for trees that are still planted. He could accept contracts only for customers for which he was, which had done business in the past, and that's not the case here.
Right, I get that there's some evidentiary concerns here. I guess the law does allow somebody who makes eighty thousand dollars on farm uses in two years to build a home, right? I mean, the law allows that, doesn't it? I'm not saying that in this instance, they've satisfied the evidentiary record, but...
Commissioner Wells, I'm an attorney, I believe you are, and I would leave that to you to make that judgment. Again, I don't know if you're still...
Maybe it's a question for our lawyer. Let Scott answer that question. Could you answer Commissioner Wells's question, please?
I'm sorry, you were... So, so the law does allow somebody, again, assuming that they provide substantial evidence, who makes eighty thousand dollars a year over two years in farm use on a piece of property to build a home, doesn't it? Isn't that what the law allows?
Correct. That is a farm dwelling authorized by statute and which is codified in the county code, and those are the applicable criteria that are the subject of this case.
So the only reason why I bring that up is because I don't like it when we're rooting against people in our community who may be trying to do something in compliance with the law. So if somebody is doing something legal and there's nothing wrong about what they're doing, I don't want to be in a position where we say, wow, you're a bad person for trying to do something legal in our community, right? They still have to follow the law. They still have to provide evidence in the record to support that they're complying with the law. But I just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're talking about here, which is the applicants in this case are not harming anybody. They're not engaged in human trafficking, they're not selling drugs, they're not shooting people, right? Like, they want to build a house on a piece of property they own, and the law allows for that under certain criteria. So I just want to make sure that, like, you know, we agree on that, right? That if they comply with the law, they can build a house, right?
Again, you'd have to ask your county counsel that. I'm not an attorney.
Okay.
All I can tell you is we have substantial evidence in the record. Our attorney has written a three-page letter describing the lack of substantial evidence. So if this goes to court, that's what it will be. We're not going to be talking about people using firearms or anything like that. We're not talking about good people or bad people or their intentions. We're talking about what is the law, what the evidence provides, and what the decision you have to make is. And again, I would ask, there'll be a fourteen-day open record period so we can review this agreement. Again, I'm not a contracts lawyer, but for my review of the agreement, it's just unenforceable.
Thank you. Thanks for being here and for reading the letter. And by the way, it did just get emailed to us, so we do have the official letter from your lawyer in our inbox. Okay, now we'll give you a second to collect your things, and then we'll move on to Mr. Wilson, who's going to, I assume, produce the applicant's application and testimony? Okay?
Mr. Wilson, come up with me some table or...
Well, I mean, it's fine, as long as you understand that you have to speak into the microphone at any point. I'm fine with that. So just drag a green chair forward.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So if I understand, that was the only testimony opposition, right? I definitely have tons of copies. I need a copy.
And since they're on camera with you, when you introduce yourself, please pass the microphone so they can individually introduce themselves for the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right at the beginning?
Yep.
Okay.
I assume we're just going to have a dialogue here at some point, so that might be easiest.
All right, thank you. For the record, my name is Fred Wilson, Kellington Law Group. Our business address is PO Box twenty-two oh-nine, Lakeview, Oregon, nine-seven oh-three-four, and we represent Dustin and Canoye Barth, who are the applicants in this case. Maybe we'll have them introduce themselves right now.
My name is Canoye Barth, and I am one of the owners of Barth Brothers Tree Farm. My address is PO Box six-three-four Sublimity, Oregon, nine-seven-three-eight-five.
And my name is Dustin Barth. I am the other owner of Barth Brothers Tree Farm, and our address is PO Box six-three-four Sublimity, Oregon, nine-seven-three-eight-five.
And before we begin, I'd just like to thank staff for their assistance on this. This has been going on for quite a long time, and they've been very professional and courteous helping, even though we had disagreement about an interpretation. They've been very helpful with getting documents provided, getting documents to the decision makers, and working with us on scheduling. Ms. Barth had a serious surgery she had to go through, and they were very accommodating about working around that, so we appreciate that. It's not always the case with every local government, so we do sincerely thank them for that, especially Mr. Barnes and Ms. King. They were both very helpful. Getting to the case, I think Mr. Barnes sort of described the property and what's going on there. One thing I would like to point out is that the hearings officer's decision, as you both noted, she did decide that you can sell, you can earn income from the sale of farm products before they're actually taken out of the ground. So I know staff doesn't agree with that, but that was what the hearings officer found. And I've got my whole legal presentation to go through, but before I go through all of that, I want to let the Barths talk to you first. That's why I kind of had them come up here first, because just yesterday, Friends of Marion County, they submitted what they thought is some sort of bombshell that Mrs. Barth's parents are the buyers. And it doesn't matter who the buyers are, and that wasn't really the issue before, that's why we didn't get into it. The issue before was whether you could count income that was from the last two years for trees that will be taken out years later. And so we didn't get into that. But I want to let, and they're sort of insinuating that this isn't a real deal, that this is all fake, this is some sort of scam or sham. And they explained at the last hearing how the issue is sort of like you have a concern that, you know, they might, you know, get their eighty thousand dollars for two years and just mow everything down, build their house, and not do any farming. And so that's what we were sort of putting evidence on before, and they went through a lot of what they did, and they'll explain that again. And the hearings officer agreed with them. They're like, oh yeah, there's no question, they're actually doing a real Christmas tree farm, they are really doing farming, there's no question about that. The only question is whether you get to count the income now, and the hearings officer said you do. But I'm going to let you have the, listen to the Barths explain what they've been doing and how to deal with her parents work, so...
Okay, I'm Canoye Barth, and I'm going to first thank you guys for listening to our story. I appreciate that. It could have really been easy for you to say, we're not going to take this. So thank you for taking the opportunity to let us, to let us tell you a little bit about us. We did purchase our property in two thousand and nineteen, and in two thousand and twenty, we started Barth Brothers Tree Farm LLC. We planted our first crop of trees. Presently, we currently have five acres of trees planted. We've put in a service road, and I've put a little picture here, and I can point those out to you. We've put in a business sign at our farm entrance. In addition to doing those things, we've also made a financial, in addition of our financial commitment to the cost of trees, we've also invested an additional thirty thousand in farm equipment and supplies. Future, we have already paid in full for another five acres' worth of trees to be planted in two thousand and twenty-three. We have already written the check, we have our receipt, we will pick up our trees in two thousand and twenty-three to have them planted. We are actually in the process of applying for permits to build a farm use building for storing our farm equipment and supplies. A portion of that building will be used to meet with vendors and conduct business. We just actually pushed start earlier this month to build our building and are expecting the building to be delivered this week. The building is an additional thirty thousand dollar investment. It's a total of sixty thousand dollars we've invested in our business from two thousand and twenty to present. As you'll hear, my husband Dustin kind of summarized for you. We were excited to start this tree farm. We were excited to have the opportunity. We have four little boys, and we were excited for them to have the opportunity to learn how to farm. It's something that has been carried on in my husband's family, and when the opportunity presented itself, it was something we really wanted to go for. Like many families, searching for the perfect tree is the highlight of the season. Memories made at the Christmas tree farm will last a lifetime. Not only will our farm contribute to our family financially, but we truly believe that will contribute to the community in a positive way. Now, if you need any photos, I know it was mentioned that we didn't have any trees, but we do, and actually, they look really good, and we're kind of excited about them. So I have just some pictures, an aerial shot of the five acres that was already planted, and then I have showing where our service road went in, our sign that we put out front.
What kind of trees are you, are planted currently?
Nobles. We have mostly nobles. We do have some frasers and some nordmans.
And what did you purchase for two thousand and twenty-three's planting?
Two thousand and twenty-three is mostly nobles. Yes. So there seems to be some concern over the relationship between the buyers of our trees and us, and I want to just take a minute to give you guys an overview of the plans the buyers have with their trees. First, as it was recently pointed out, the buyers Ron and Rhonda are my parents. When Dustin and I purchased our property in two thousand and nineteen, we took some time to research what type of crop we wanted to put on our land. We wanted to be sure it was not only cost-effective, but something our family truly had an interest in raising. We were excited to settle on Christmas trees. We then began the process of starting our LLC, naming our business, and researching vendors to purchase trees from. As we continued to work on our business venture...
As we continued to work on our business venture, Canoye's father became, he was placed on the liver transplant list, and it was becoming quite clear he was going to be no longer able to continue working as his illness forced him to retire early. Her father was an accountant for thirty years. He was a numbers guy, and understood the importance of making your money work for you. With her dad's current health situation, her parents decided to research alternative sources of income. They approached us with the interest in purchasing trees at wholesale and plans to sell them in Oregon, California, and Hawaii. Her mom is from California originally, and her dad is from Hawaii. With his contacts in Hawaii and the contacts in California, he saw this as an opportunity to generate income with little physical responsibility. They had visions of selling their trees together in retirement and researching this new venture together. Unfortunately, Canoye's father passed in January of this year. Her mom is excited to continue the vision that they had going forward. She isn't alone. Canoye's mother is not alone in this venture, even though her father has passed. Canoye has two brothers that are willing to work with Rhonda in the selling of these And so I'll kind of talk about my history in the farming community. So my great-grandfather was an immigrant. They settled in North Dakota where they had a farm. His son took over, and then my grandfather took over that farm in North Dakota. They moved from North Dakota to California, and then here into Oregon and Cyo with about a hundred and twenty-acre farm. My dad grew up in that farm practice. He too also bought seventeen acres in Marion County in Sublimity where he grew Japanese maples and ornamentals. I grew up, my childhood, working in this nursery, and then I also worked the summers with local grass seed farmers. Farming is in my blood. It's what I grew up doing, and I want to give that to my kids, too. There isn't a lot of people that go to college nowadays. They get a college degree in agriculture and then leave that and decide to go purchase property. I'm sure you guys know, property isn't easy to buy, especially farmland, because it's a generational thing, that farmers, their children farm their property, and you just can't buy farmland property. So when we had this opportunity to buy this twenty acres, this has always been a dream of mine to have a farm and to continue that farming practice in my family. And with the four boys, I believe, we have a great opportunity to continue that tradition. One thing I'd like to address is Friends of Marion County brought up the address that we have for the property, which is the eighty-twenty Denison Road. When I applied for permits for the home in September, Austin was actually the one who gave me that address for the purpose of applying for those permits for the home. When I went in prior to applying for the permit or applying for this application, I actually talked to Austin about what I would need for documentation to apply for this building, and he informed me that, like, a deposit slip of the income, a receipt for the income, and that was about all for the two years of the sale of whatever farm product we had. So I just wanted to address those.
Thank you.
So turning back to the legalities of the case, when we were before the hearings officer, this was all about whether or not you could count the seventy thousand, the eighty thousand dollars each year before the trees were harvested. And that was the only reason staff had recommended denial. And they still don't agree with that, but the hearings officer agreed with us and said, yeah, current employment of land, you kind of went through that, this counts, you get to count it, it doesn't have to be the same year. So I think if they'd known that then, it's as if it had been approval from the get-go. But when we got to the hearings officer, she went through all of that, and then she decided, yeah, you get to count that. And then she sort of came up with this new reason for denial that wasn't really even talked about before, and so she said it had to be commercially reasonable, it had to not be potentially unenforceable, and it had to be credible. And that, and that's just not...
And that, and that's just not in the code anywhere. She even admitted that in the decisions. She said, staff candidly admits this is not in the code, which is basically staff candidly admitting that you can't deny it for that reason. And I understand, you know, your concern that, you know, what if this is some sort of fake? What if this is some sort of scam to get a house when they shouldn't have one? And so that's why we put on the evidence to show you. So, yeah, they really are doing a tree farm, and the hearings officer agreed with that. And so I think once you decide that they actually, and she decided that they earned that income from the sale of farm products on the property. It'd been one thing if she said, no, this was a complete fake. It was just a gift. They didn't actually sell these products. They didn't actually get the money from that. That might be a real reason to deny the application, because that's fine if you didn't meet the approval criteria. But she did find that they sold Christmas trees, they got eighty thousand dollars at least each year, and it was from the sale of trees from that property. And that's all you need for an approval. That, that should have been the end of it. That should have been stamped approval, you're good to go. So then she brought up, even though you meet the approval criteria, I'm going to put in these additional problems that you need to show it's commercially reasonable, enforceable, incredible. And that, as we explained in our briefing, I won't go through it all again, but that violates the codification rule that says you can only deny things for things, you can only deny it for a basis that's in the code, and that's not in the code. But even if you do go there, even if we do have to show that this was a commercially reasonable sale, we put in all that evidence, too. And it is. We had, the only expert was Mr. Howe, who testified. And he's the one with twenty-plus years of Christmas tree experience. And he was mostly testifying about how, yeah, it's perfectly reasonable to have a sale before the trees are harvested. But he also testified, looked at the price and what they're selling, and says, yeah, that's completely reasonable. Prices have gone up like crazy on Christmas trees even before inflation. Trees are really difficult to get, first of all. So even if, you know, forgetting about the price, you have to be able to get them in the first place. And he said, yeah, this is fine. And so that was the only evidence before the hearings officer. She was sort of speculating, and she based her decision on saying that staff said that the prices weren't inflated. But it's a little complicated, but going back, one of the first things Friends of Marion County argued was that, oh, no, you didn't sell the trees. They're only, you know, this tall. You didn't sell trees, you didn't harvest trees in 2021 or 2022. So charging fifty-three dollars for trees that are this big is not reasonable. And we would agree with that. But that's a total strawman argument. We never argued that the trees that are two years old are worth fifty-three fifty. We argued, when they're sold in like four or five years, they will be. So she was kind of relying on something staff had said about something different. But even putting that all aside, if we're going to look at whether this was a commercially reasonable deal, it was. And first of all, it doesn't have to be an arms-length transaction. If you look at their comments they submitted yesterday, it makes, maybe it's just me, but it seemed to me they were trying to make it look like that was something my colleague, Ms. Kellington, submitted, because they said, here, we're submitting stuff from Mrs. Kellington, and it kind of blends right into that stuff about arms-length transactions. And since I wasn't involved in her earlier case, I was like, did we do that? And then I went back and looked, and said, no, no, he got that from somewhere else. So there's nothing in state statute, there's nothing in Marion County code that says this has to be an arms-length transaction. If you want to look at whether it's commercially reasonable, you know, maybe that's another thing, but it doesn't have to be, just because she sold them to her parents doesn't mean that it's immediately disqualified. And so if you turn and look at the price, even using some outdated numbers that Friends of Marion County submitted from a few years ago, they're arguing it's only thirty-five or forty dollars for wholesale. Fifty-three fifty, it's, it's in the ballpark, and that was a couple of years ago before prices went up, before inflation. And we've submitted, and even the hearings officer said that prices were higher, we've submitted evidence now that for getting nobles, the price can range up, all the way up to seventy-one dollars for wholesale. And even for less quality ones, their forty-seven is the lowest price. And that's this year. And then if you take in, you know, inflation right now is running about eight percent. If you do that for five years, that, that would be almost seventy dollars per tree. So I think if anything, you know, they probably charged too little. It also, we also had Mr. Howe saying it was reasonable. And then finally, even in Friends of Marion County's comments from yesterday, they were kind of repeating stuff they said about how you have to look at the price right now, which is not what we're talking about. But they even said, although the applicant's two-point-three-seven planted acreage might be sufficient to yield the required income if the trees were grown to maturity, you know, even Friends of Marion County is saying, like, this is at least close. And so I think, given inflation, given it's five years from now, given all the other evidence we've submitted, it's definitely commercially reasonable. And there's been a lot of talk about the contract and like parsing the particulars of the contract. And there's, first of all, there's no requirement for a contract. You, these go on handshake things all the time. They do on napkins, on matchbooks, that kind of thing. So they just did that because the hearings officer had some concerns. It's like, okay, we don't need to do this, but we'll do it. We'll address that. We'll show, yes, this was from their property. To suggest that they're going to get the Christmas trees from somewhere else, that's, that's reposterous. They don't have any other acreage. They don't have anywhere else they would get the Christmas trees. The hearings officer's concerned, you know, what would happen if you sold the property? They're not planning on doing that, but they agreed, hey, if we do that, we'll put it, we'll put the restriction in that they have to save the trees for the buyers. And so that was just to address the concerns of the hearings officer. I don't think that's necessary at all. And then also, and we've submitted evidence today, you know, that the prices have gotten much higher. One of the articles talks about going up thirty, forty percent for Christmas trees, going up even more than inflation. Trees are selling at Williams and Sonoma for up to a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty dollars per tree. So getting a tree for fifty-three fifty five years from now, that is, that's not overpaying for trees. And finally, I, I can understand why I'd be concerned about setting a precedent that people could sort of do a scam or a sham to, to, to build a house they shouldn't be able to build. And even if you go there, I think the evidence is overwhelming. And actually, the only real evidence is that they are Christmas tree farmers. They have planted all the trees. They've shown that they're actually in the ground. There will be more than enough trees to satisfy the requirements to sell to her parents. The only, the only, it's not even evidence, but the only thing in opposition is people speculating. It's like, oh, this isn't real, or, oh, the trees might not be there, or, oh, this isn't a very good contract. But that's not evidence, that's just speculation. There's overwhelming evidence that this is exactly what they're planning on doing. They are people who want to get into farming. There's already enough, roadblocks thrown up for people trying to do those things. There's no need to bring in additional requirements and hurdles that they have to jump over. And finally, Friends of Marion County submitted some documents that Mrs. Kellington submitted in a previous case, and they tried to make this some sort of, aha, we've got you kind of thing. And first of all, it doesn't have anything to do with this case, but she is going to come up and explain in more detail why that doesn't have anything to do with that case. But before we, before we bring her up, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
We don't have any questions for you right now.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry for your loss. While Mrs. Kellington comes up, Austin, I have a question, and or Scott. So let's just say hypothetically that the board was to approve this application today. And, because I don't disagree that there's a lot of speculation and feeling around this and interpretation of one's opinion, but I have my concerns around, around a lot of evidence. My question is to you, what is the greatest risk to the county if this application was approved today? And it turns out that the applicant chooses to not farm, continue to farm the property once the hill is built?
So I think it's, it's two. Is the first would be that other people would apply for the same sort of thing, and we'd have a bunch of people buying, you know, smaller parcels of farmland to throw a crop on there, to rip it out of the ground, to then put a house on there that we've taken a bunch of farmland out of production.
Yeah.
The second is that, I mean, I believe this one is probably going to get appealed either way, but it's not for me to say, so that's, that's the future of this, I think. It's, it's the precedence and what happens with the case after.
Okay, thanks. Anything to add?
I think that that summarizes it well.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I keep losing my sign-up sheet. Mrs. Kellington, please introduce yourself for the record.
Sure. Thank you very much, Wendy Kellington. I am an attorney, the kind of the principal at the Kellington Law Group, and I've worked with many of you on many Marion County land use battles, and it's, it's good to see all of you again. Thank you. And so I was cited as somewhat of an expert in, in farm use cases. The, and I guess I should be flattered, I worked cooperatively with Thousand Friends of Oregon in a case.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but would you be able to speak a little louder?
You bet.
Thank you.
I'm accused of this a lot. I worked cooperatively with Thousand Friends of Oregon a year, several months ago, I can't remember, in a case that was, that was brought to our firm, having to do with facts that resemble, have no resemblance to what's going on here. And before I tell you about that case, I want to tell you that we have the luxury as a small law firm of taking clients we believe in, that we want to represent, and turning away dogs. And that's exactly what we do. And because I've done this for forty years, I even sat at Luba for six years, whether that's good or bad, I don't know, but I've, I've been around the block a long time. And what was brought to me was the case of a young family that was trying to make a living as a farmer, who had a neighbor who wanted to put a relative dwelling within the spray zone of the young family farmer's property, which would have changed or put off limits their ability to spray. So it was going to hurt a young family farmer. And so I looked at the facts before I took the case on. And here what we had, which is not what's going on here, we had a landowner who did not participate in the farm at all. We had a landowner who was moving to Alaska to run a fishing charter and lodge business. We had a landowner who owned no equipment, did not invest thirty thousand dollars plus in equipment, did not invest one dime in a crop, did not invest in a new farm outbuilding. He owned no equipment in the operation of the farm. In fact, the farm operation was leased wholly to somebody else. Now, the applicant owned lots and lots of property all over the place, and it was really clear what was going on. Just wanted to plop another house right next to this young farmer trying to eke out a living who wouldn't be able to spray, or at least spray the way he needs to for his farm. And so in support of that application, the applicant provided tax returns that supposedly showed farm income from the property, but they were doctored. No dispute, they were doctored. They were so heavily redacted, you couldn't tell what the income was for. You couldn't tell the category of the ink that was responsible for the farm income. You certainly couldn't tell which of the applicant's properties they went to. They were missing key parts. They were missing key sections. And eventually, we were able to figure out, because the redacting wasn't done very well, and at least one of the returns was for manufacturing and not farm use. Now, Thousand Friends knows that. Their lawyer knows that, because I worked with Andrew Mulkey on that case. So you make your own judgments about what that means. So what we have here is another young family that has deep roots in Marion County farming, that wants to eke out a living with four little kids being farmers. And they have produced for you evidence that they're doing it. There's no reasonable dispute here that they are farming. They have trees in the ground, and they're looking good. You saw pictures of them. The fact that some Google Earth image didn't show pictures of them in two thousand twenty-one doesn't say a thing, because if you look on Google Earth images, they're taken often years before they're published. That's just the nature of that business. But in any case, you have actual photographs of boots on the ground. What's there? You have receipts of what's been planted there. And these are not kids that have a bunch of property everywhere else. These are kids that have property here, and they're trying to sell Christmas trees. They want to eke out a living here. So we have a tract that's in farm use, check. We have an operator that earned eighty thousand dollars in income in the last two years from the sale of farm products on that farm, check. There is no way to claim here, ooh, we can't tell where that came from. Of course you can. They testified to it. You have receipts about it. That income comes from the sale of these trees on this property, so check. And there's no rule in Oregon, Commissioner Willis, you asked the question, and I can tell you, there's no rule in Oregon that in order to meet this test, that the trees actually have to be harvested. And there's also no test out there that says that the transactions cannot be between related parties, because if there were such a rule, Oregon would be in a lot of trouble, wouldn't it? I think of George Packing and George, Gary George Farms. And I think of Carlton Seed LLC, the LLC members of which are Van Dykes, and I think we're all pretty aware that the Van Dykes are pretty involved in farming. The fact is, the business of farming is often a family business, and we want it to be a legacy business, because that keeps kids engaged. When you have layers of family, when you have elders involved, when you have four little kids involved, when you have parents involved in the business of farming, it lasts. You can look at any series of statistics, but I'll bet you guys just know it in your bones that that's how it works. So the, the idea that there was some hidden thing, the address of the buyer was never hidden, and the address of the buyer was always the same address of where these kids are living. So it was never an issue. There was, it's always been something that has been out there. It just never mattered. And I didn't think it mattered, and, and the Barth's didn't think it mattered. If it mattered, there would be some standard about saying, you can't have related parties involved in farm transactions, but then we wouldn't have any farming in Oregon. So who, who knew that that would be a concern, especially if Thousand Friends of Oregon, for crying out loud. And this idea that there's some deep, dark credibility determination from the hearings officer is silly. And I'm just going to read page fourteen. "The testimony of Dustin and Canoe, Canoe Barth evidences without question that the Barth's have every hope and intention of operating a Christmas tree farm and raising their family on the farm property while engaging in a farming operation." And that's true. And does that sound like a group of kids that as soon as they get to yes here, they're going to tear out those plants that they've spent their hard-earned dollars, you know, grow, planting and buying, or that they're going to, you know, tear out their farm building, or they're going to sell their equipment right away? Of course not. They're invested, as the hearings officer correctly found. "The Barth's appear to have a genuine and heartfelt desire to have a Christmas tree farm for families to enjoy and make memories. The Barth's' good intentions are not," there's a missing not, "are not doubted or questioned by the hearings officer." So this, this is, this should not be, I mean, it must have been terribly hurtful for them to hear the things that, that they have heard. There should not be any question that they're farming. They've made money. A relative is involved in, in that transaction, and they are fully invested in producing a farm product on this property. The last thing I want to leave you with is, these kids really can't afford this. And I'm here on my own nickel today, because it just made me mad with Thousand Friends trying to pull. And so I thought I'd just come down here myself, and since they qualified me as an expert, I thought I'd give you my expert ideas. But they can't afford this. They really can't. And so I think you have everything you need to get to yes today. I don't think you need this record to stay open myself, so I'm hoping you don't. But if you feel like you need to, you know, the Barth's would have to say, well, then we need a chance to respond to whatever Thousand Friends at all puts in, and then we need to have an opportunity to write a final written argument, because that's the way all of that works. And so I'd leave that with you. If that's what you feel like you need, then we'd want to have that other side of the coin, because I don't trust what they put in, frankly. So unless you have something else you want out of me, I think we're done.
Oh, he has.
Oh, he has questions.
I have questions.
You have questions, of course, and I may need them to come up, so.
No, I don't think so. This has to do with the law.
Okay.
So I think I agree with everything you said. Here's the problem.
Okay.
EFU is special in Oregon, right?
Yep.
And one of the concerns, I think, of farmers in Marion County is, you know, people like living out in the country, but they don't necessarily want a farm. They just kinda want a house in the country, because it's nicer than being in the city. And so if the interpretation we give, that's kinda how this works, right? We sort of make decisions, and staff sort of says, okay, this is how the board's interpreting us. If the interpretation we give is, if your family member gives you $160,000, and you have a receipt for the sale of something on your farm, then you can build a house. Potentially, you could get a lot of rich kids going and buying five acres, two acres, three acres, getting a receipt for 160 grand from their parents, and walking to Marion County and say, I'm gonna build a house. And from a policy-wide perspective, that sort of undermines what EFU is. I'm not, I don't believe that's what the Barthes are doing here. I believe the Barthes are farmers. But the problem is, there needs to be some sort of connection to the farm use. And I agree that, based on my reading of the rules, it doesn't have to be harvested for it to be income. For your primary purpose to be making income on the farm, you don't have to have a harvest. But the way that most of these contracts work, these multi-year contracts work, you know this, is it's not like a lump sum you get paid five years in advance. So the farmers that I know that have five-year contracts, they get kinda paid on a rolling basis. They don't always get paid after harvest, right? But it's not like I get paid all the money for something that I'm gonna deliver five years from now. And I think that's the concern, is how do we, if we say, which I agree, it doesn't have to be arm's length, because if we didn't have family members doing deals, we wouldn't have any deals in Marion County. Doesn't have to be harvested. But it does have to be a binding contract. It can't, I think that the question that I have are the, and this is true even for like the IRS, right? So when you have loans between family members, the IRS requires you to have market rate interest. Otherwise, you have gift tax consequences, right? So you can have a deal between family members, but it has to be an enforceable deal. And the concern that I have is, once you start saying it can be a five-year timeline, if it's not family, I'm not sure who does that deal. Like, who buys Christmas trees five years out and pays you upfront, you know? I mean, I think that's the concern, and that doesn't mean that the parents, in this case, didn't do it. It doesn't mean that the money didn't change hands. It doesn't mean they have every intention of picking up those trees in five years. But there needs to be some way that we can tie this to farm use in a way that's enforceable going forward, so we don't just have a bunch of rich kids from Portland coming with their parents' money and buying up farm ground and building houses out here.
That's a great question. Thank you. And I think it's an important one. I agree with you. So I have a couple of different things. One is, and we'd be happy to draft findings of approval if that's where you go that reflects these topics. One is to flag very clearly in the findings that you're serious, and that you are well aware of your land use enforcement authority, and you are prepared to use it in the event that you learn that the transaction doesn't result in the sale of these trees, in fact, or that the Barthes do not follow through on their, the farm obligation that they've made to the county in order to get their dwelling, because you do have that authority right now. And I don't know if any county in the state has withdrawn anybody's building permit and said, your house is unlawful because you didn't do what you were supposed to do for farm use, but you have enforcement authority and you can flag that.
But tell us, I mean, how would you enforce that? So let's say that we say, yep, you can build a house, and they go build that house, and then six years from now, not these folks, but a different group of people show up, they mowed the trees under, they didn't sell them, they just basically got a gift from their parents and built a house. We can't afford it. How do we enforce that?
So I don't know. I mean, I haven't, I've thought about this in the years that I've been doing this practice. If, so when you get an initial farm dwelling, sometimes you have to have a farm management plan. Sometimes there's all kinds of conditions of approval that attach to that farm dwelling. Well, what's a condition of approval? It's a condition that you do things consistently with that approval, or you lose it. And there's, at least legally, as far as I know, no reason why a county couldn't enforce its conditions of approval, even though they're harsh ones. I think what would happen as a practical matter is if a county were to enforce its conditions of approval on farm dwellings, were to start crowling about that, that the owners, by golly, would clean up their act and get back to farming. I mean, they would have to, right? Because the county has the authority to say, you didn't live up to your conditions of approval, you're out of here. That's mean and nasty, but I mean, that's the risk that you assume when you accept conditions of approval. Everybody has that in a land use case. So that's the first thing. But I think there are far less draconian ways of also getting to that issue. I started with enforcement, because you ended with enforcement. The other is that the decision, should you decide to approve, would be very fact-intensive. It would make a lot of findings of fact about the farm use and the investment that proves that there is an ongoing farm use on the property. It would recite in painful detail what that $30,000 of invested equipment is. It would detail the investment in trees over the years, including the 5,000 prospective trees that they've already purchased but are not yet in their hands. It would discuss the unique circumstances informing the last two years that resulted in that farm income, to include the once-in-a-lifetime pandemic that resulted in supply chain shortages that still apply, that resulted in worker shortages that still apply, that probably didn't cause Putin to lose his mind, but that caused energy prices at some point, you know, to go absolutely through the roof, and shortages of Christmas trees. These articles and all this stuff that's put in the record demonstrates that there's a real shortage. And if I am a person who really wants to have Christmas trees, and I wanna be in that business, and it's important to me, not only from a business point of view, but because I lost my husband, who wanted it more than life itself, then I'm gonna make sure that I'm gonna get the trees I think I'm gonna get, and I'm gonna be willing to spend whatever it is to buy them, because I may not be able to get them in five or six years, because the world's gone crazy. And there may not be enough trees for me. I'm a single buyer right now. I'm not a big business. Do I compete with the thousand, whoever it is that Thousand Friends was talking about, you know, and how they can, you know, buy trees? I don't know if I can do that, but I'm gonna get a handle. I'm gonna own these trees when they come out of the ground, so that I can run this business, because I'm emotionally invested in doing that. And to me, that's reasonable. And it's, I would recite all of that in the facts, because I don't think anybody else can prove up on that kind of a commitment, and certainly not some trust fund baby from, you know, the Portland metro area is sure as heck not gonna be able to prove up on that, like the Barthes can. So that's, I guess, my answer, and if there's something else. I don't want to miss it, because it's so important to them. Anything else?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Scott, does the current law for EFU state that a crop must be sold commercially to justify the income?
Well, the aspect of selling the crop comes in, in this case, for obtaining the $80,000 test, the farm use test.
Yeah.
For obtaining a farm.
But let's just say, so I understand that, and I apologize for cutting you off, but I want to be more clear. So let's say that I buy a farm, and I plant a bunch of trees on it, and some local nonprofit comes and writes me a check for $80,000 and gives all those trees away. They're not making a profit. They're, whatever they are, they're not some wholesaler that's turning it into, you know, the corner market tree store. Is that an allowable, under the law, does it matter whether it's a commercial operation purchasing the product or not?
No, it does not.
I know the answer's no, but I just want to verify that it's no.
That is correct. It does not. And looking specifically at OAR 660 033 0135 sub 4, and this is on page eight of the hearings officer's decision, it has the $80,000, what I call the $80,000 test. Subject tract is currently employed for the farm use as defined in 215 203, on which the farm operator earned at least $80,000 from the sale of farm products in each of the last two years. So there's nothing there about the buyer.
Yeah, okay. And just to clarify, because I'm super new at land use, tract is the property we're talking about? Is that the definition of tract?
Yeah. The property that is subject to the application.
Okay, so on page 15 of the hearings officer's findings, under the second paragraph, the last sentence, she says, "The hearings officer rejects that the applicant's received income exceeding $80,000 from the sale of farm products from the subject tract. As such, a sale transaction is not commercially reasonable, potentially unenforceable, and not credible." Can you help me understand what she means by that?
I think what the hearings officer is talking about there is the bona fides of the sale itself. I don't think the hearings officer is talking about the, whether the trees, before they are severed, is a farm crop. I think the hearings officer is talking about the nature of these sales.
So, okay.
It has to do with like whether it's a legally enforceable transaction versus a gift thing? That's basically what she's saying.
Okay. So I guess where I'm hung up is that there's nothing in rule that says, and I'm not new to tree farming. One of my good friends is a tree farmer and has been for a really long time, and I, actually, my daughters work on her tree farm. So I understand tree farming from a distance, and I understand in their case, which is different in this case, and this is the comparison I'm trying to make, is for my friends, they enter into a contract, and they receive a certain percentage of purchase per tree that's planted. And then the years progress, so, you know, according to this agriculture website, it takes about eight years for a noble to come to full fruition before it's harvested. They harvest it, and then they get paid the rest for whatever is harvested and sold. I guess where I'm hung up is that this situation is just different. It's different in the fact that their buyer, regardless, because I don't care who the buyer is, I mean, I could list off just as many, if not more, farmers than that attorney did, who buy and sell among their brothers and sisters and grandchildren and whatever, is that they just paid the full price, the assumed price, I suppose, because they're guessing, and while I think that's risky business, it's none of my business how they do that. It's not relevant, I guess, is what I'm getting at. It's not relevant to this decision by this body whether or not the seller received the dollars upfront or in increments, right? That's not relevant to the decision, the outcome that I have to make today. But it is a feeling, it's a motion, that it sounds like you have, Austin, that makes it uncredible for you. Is that right?
So I'd say yes and no. In the very first decision I issued, I didn't speak about any of this, because I wanted to keep it strictly to the code, and I just said it was not harvested, so therefore I don't believe it's farm crop, and that's when my decision ended. Since then, we've had a lot more information pour in. It seems to be like every hearing or every decision, you know, us or Friends will say something, and then they respond, and then it elevates to now it's this. So now the question of credibility is all here and there, and I think the decision should be based on the code. And while I do think the credibility information and the sale information is relevant to the case to understand it, I don't think that's what it should be decided on.
So originally, when you made your first finding of denial, and then it moved on to the hearings officer, which was based on your interpretation, that because it wasn't harvested, you believe, that's your impression, that because it was not harvested, it doesn't meet the terms of.
Farm use.
Farm use.
It's an interpretation of the definition of farm.
Correct.
So that's where we're, I know I'm talking around, and I apologize, because this is a really big deal to Marion County. This is a big deal to me. I don't want to discount, I know that you all folks at Friends of Marion County think that we just want to decide against you, but that's actually not the case for me. I do want to protect this farmland. I think it's a really big deal, and I don't want people to not harvest their land, ever. I think when you move to a farmland, that's what you do. But I also understand the concern that we have around setting a precedence, and I'm just, Commissioner, I'm conflicted on that concept of a precedence, because as you stated, and as, I apologize, I don't remember her name, Mrs. Kellington stated, frankly, I don't want people from Multnomah County to come down here with their daddy's dollars and purchase land and then ruin the farm area. I want to avoid that. And so I don't really know how to make a finding today, because personally, I am leaning towards approving the application, because I do feel that they have met the terms of the outcomes they're supposed to produce for the EFU and to be able to build a home. But I don't know how to put that into words to be able to help us as a county block others from just thinking they can come buy upland, as you suggested.
Brandon, could you come up here? To play off what you're saying, my...
Let him introduce himself. Thank you.
Brandon Reich, Marion County Planning Director.
So I agree. Basically, what we're doing is we're interpreting farm use, right? And staff's interpretation of farm use was that it required raising, selling, and harvesting in order for it to qualify as farm use. I don't think that's called for in this code. I'm willing to interpret this as saying that you can look at that holistically. And if you raise it and you sell the crops, that counts as farm use. If you have, because it's the primary purpose of, so if the primary purpose is to raise it and harvest eventually, then I think that qualifies. But I actually agree with the hearings officer, that when I read this, the current employment of land for the primary purpose of obtaining a profit in money by raising, harvesting, and selling crops, that does not countenance, for me, gifts. Like, obtaining a profit in money is not like somebody gives you a present of money, right? Like, that's not, I don't think a reasonable person would say, oh, obtaining a profit in money includes, you know, like, your parents giving you money for Christmas, or, right? Like, that's nothing in return, right? Obtaining a profit for money suggests that there's an exchange of value. Does that make sense?
Yes. It's not a gift, because they're buying trees.
It's not a gift, because there's an exchange, right. So I think when I'm thinking about precedents, what we're gonna do set forward, is it's, the evidence that an applicant needs to provide is evidence that it's not a gift, that there's actually an exchange of value, a credible exchange of value. And I think that's what the hearings officer was saying, when she was saying it needs to be commercially valid, commercially valid, is it needs to be enforceable, right? You can't have a sham. It has to be something that both parties can enforce, and that the county can be certain will be enforced, right? That just, it can't just be like, you know, here, we did a contract, but then I can cancel the contract whenever I want and turn it into a gift. There has to be some sort of way that we can be certain that this actually is a commercial transaction, right? So I guess, Brandon, the reason I brought you up here is because you heard my conversation with Ms. Wellington, you heard this conversation that we're having. Do you have any thoughts on that? Because I suppose what Ms. Wellington said was basically, if we approve this, and then we just don't approve the bad ones, then we're the ones that sort of set the policy. But I know that's harder for you as staff to implement, if somebody's coming forward.
So I think one of the aspects here is that until 1993, you could establish a farm dwelling on what was called a farm plan. And that would be, I intend to invest in this property, and I can make so much income based on the type of crop I can grow and harvest, and therefore... And therefore, um, I, I permitted a home, and I can do that farm operation, and raise that crop, and generate that money. And, the legislature took that away in ninety-three, and replaced it with the farm income test. And, components of this could be similar to the farm plan, where I have, I'm investing in the property, I have this crop, I have a sale, either pending or already, but I haven't harvested yet. And that not having harvested yet could be an issue, because it resembles a farm plan. Down the road, I'm gonna be harvesting.
But what about, like, what about my friend who has the mint contract? Or what about her, what, what about, uh, her friends at the Christmas tree farm, they get paid some upfront, and then paid some at harvest? Like, and, and it rolls over year over year, like?
Lot of, lot of the contracts, I'm not an expert on contracts at all, but a lot of the farm contracts, I think a lot of them do include, there's a payment once you're, once you harvest. There's so many uncertainties in farming, between the operator, the health of the operator, say, um, weather and the market, that sometimes, uh, you may not have a crop to provide.
But there's insurance for all that.
There would be insurance.
Like, I mean, that
So it
Has to be like reason, I mean, come on.
And, and the farm income test, it has a component where it takes that into account, where you can base the income on the previous two years. You can do the best of the three out of five years, or you can do the average of the three out of five years, or the previous three out of five. So you can have different, depending on the market, type of crop, you have different options for how to be able to show that farm income.
But, Brandon, let me say, so let's, 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 I just, let's say that the facts here were slightly different. So let's say, uh, instead, what we're doing is, we have three out of five years, and they have contracts for these Christmas trees, and they're getting paid basically a third of what they think the eventual price will be upfront. And then, on harvest of the trees, they're gonna get the rest of it, okay? And let's say they plant enough trees that that third of the, of the eventual price they get upfront is more than eighty thousand dollars over three years, right? I would be super comfortable in that space, saying, that's farm income. Because it's pursuant to a contract, they got paid some upfront, they got, they're gonna get paid some on sale. Yeah, they haven't gotten the full amount of the harvested contract price, but they have gotten paid for those trees. And they planted enough trees, and it's, and it's a commercially valid, enforceable contract by the buyer, right? Like, I think all those, those things would say to me, I don't have to, I don't have to justify this. This is a real farm. I think what makes this a little bit funny, or, is that, you know, it's parents buying the trees from the kids.
And they gave them full
And they gave them full price upfront, right? That's, that's what makes this a little bit like, is this really a commercially valid contract? Or do the parents just really wanna help their kids? Which, there's nothing wrong with that, it's, it's just, I'm not sure it's obtaining a profit in money, you know? And so, um
Except for the fact that they, um, stated, I didn't see this, 'cause I, I didn't have the time to look for receipts, but they stated that they, you know, they made a purchase of the seedlings, planted them, present and future. And that they've purchased equipment, and that they're moving forward with farm buil- buildings to try to wrap around the whole concept of a business, which makes it commercial. I do have a question about the nineteen ninety-three, uh, farm plan. How, how would a farm plan been enforced pre-nineteen ninety-three on a tract that built a home, that then didn't comply with the law? Did you just go kick them out?
No.
Yeah, what did you do?
Nothing. The home was already built. The plan was in place, the home got built. That's probably a portion of the reason why that was changed.
Yeah, okay. And what, did Marion County, pre-nineteen ninety-three, approve a bunch of these land use applications for homes to be built on EFU land? And then the farms become unfarmable, because they chose not to engage, that you're aware of?
I know we approved a number of applications. I don't know if they were continued to be farmed.
Okay. Okay.
So, originally, my reading of the hearings officer was, at the time of the hearing, there was not a contract. She was concerned that the length of time to harvest, one of the ways to be evident that that was going to happen would be to provide a contract. And so, the applicants have provided a contract, um, for that. And then the other issue the hearings officer identified was the value of the trees being sold. And there was evidence provided at the hearing today that that value is at least consistent today. Down the road, you know, I don't know what the value of trees will be, higher or lower. Um, so, in a way, it appears that the applicant has this addressed both of the hearings officer's concerns.
Correct.
However, that may not address the board's concerns about how to differentiate between this application and other potential applications, where there could be a contract for a sale of a crop that hasn't been harvested yet.
Yeah. I do agree that I think that the two hearings officers' concerns have been addressed. Whether or not people like the validity of the contract, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm definitely not a contract lawyer. So I, when I read it, it seems like a contract to me, but whether that holds up in court, I, I don't know.
There is time to leave the record open, and for the board to reconvene to consider this at a later date. We have a little bit of time. If the board wanted to, um, board could grant a week or two to, uh, the opponent, a week for that, or two for the applicant, and then reconvene, and we would have to make a decision at that meeting.
Okay.
And, and there has been a request for, to leave the record open
Right.
along those lines as well.
Requested only from the
From the opposite.
From the opponent, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Does the, does the applicant have to agree to that?
No.
No, we just
But, um, the board does have to grant at least one week for a rebuttal.
We're, we're within time deadlines?
For the VOC or the continued?
The very end date.
The very end date is ten twenty-six, twenty-two.
Ten twenty-six. So documentation would have to be in by the twelfth, um, of October. That would give
So that would move the next hearing for us to the twenty, to the very, the last date, which is Wednesday, the twenty-sixth of October? Yeah?
Yes. And I will be, I will be out for that week.
How dare you take your time off? I, okay, so
The board could close the hearing today, leave the record open, and then reconvene on the nineteenth through the twenty-sixth to consider the material submitted.
Okay. I am inclined to leave the record open. I need to do more research on a whole, three pages of notes that I've taken today, so
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
No, not at this point. We're making a decision moving forward.
Scott, my motion is to close the hearing, leave the record open, and schedule a reminder.
If you close the hearing, well, how long do you want to leave the record open for the opponent and for the applicant? It's your choice.
We're reconvening at some point.
And we reconvene then two weeks later.
In two weeks.
After, well, we reconvene two weeks after the last open record.
So the applicant gets how, if we leave it open for the applicant, it's a week, and it, for the opponent, it's two weeks?
It's, it's, you can leave it open for the, minimum for the applicant's, one week. So, a staff would recommend you leave the record open until the September twenty-first for the opponent, uh, September twenty-eighth for the applicant, and then reconvene on the October twelfth or nineteenth. Nineteenth would be better. I give some time to review the documentation provided.
The nineteenth, is that what you said? Okay.
So, um, opponent until September twenty-one, applicant until September twenty-eighth, and then reconvene on the nineteenth.
Got it.
That's a lot. Okay. So, I will make a motion that we leave the record open until September twenty-first for the opponent, until September twenty-eighth for the applicant, and that we reconvene this hearing on October nineteenth.
And you intend to close the hearing?
Yes. I need to close this hearing first. Yeah, sorry, that we close this hearing, and then we reconvene October nineteenth.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you for being here. I know that this is probably inconvenient for you, but this is a really important process for us to go through thoroughly. Thank you. So we will reconvene as a regular Board of Commissioners and adjourn today's meeting.